All right, guys. Thank you all for being here. I have a couple of certificates of appreciations to hand out, some volunteers we had. In one of these council meetings, I made a remark or statements that I'm going to seek student help to rebuild some of these athletic gyms in some of our city facilities. And the first person that contacted us was Barnable High School Athletic Director and head boys basketball coach Micah Hagens, and offered any help we needed. So knowing he's got a whole bunch of young backs, we sought them to reassemble the sport court in Susan Park Gym. So each coach and each player that participated, which is 100% of them, are going to receive a certificate of appreciation, says, "Be it known that the City of Kenner hereby recognizes Barnable High School Athletics Director and Head Boys Basketball Coach Micah Hagens for helping to reassemble the sport court flooring at Susan Park Gym alongside with his fellow coaches and players." Giving under my hand and the seal of the City of Kenner, Louisiana, this, the Fourth Day of August 2022, Michael J. Glazer, Mayor. And look, for us to rebuild this city quickly, we're going to rely on a lot of volunteers. During the mayor's comments, I'm going to recognize a couple more volunteers that helped some council members out in their district. But now, if y'all want to come up, I'll call your names, and we'll take a photograph, and you can go on about your business, and we'll call you when we need you again. Coach, you up? If you can come up here and grab this, thank you. Coach Micah Hagens. Thank you for your help. Next up, we got, lucky enough, I butchered names, I went to these names already, Coach Maurice Tines. Assistant Boys Basketball Coach Alex O'Brien. We do have one coach that's not available to make it here tonight. So we have a Student-Athlete Bernard Hubbard. Student Athlete Da'Shawn McGee. Student Athlete Omar De La Rosa. And I briefly asked them what they planned, you know, what's the record going to be? And it's state championship or bust. So it's a confident bunch. So if y'all want to come up here, we'll take a photograph with you.
All right. We're going to the back. Just feel that. Feel that. Tom, you might have a shot. Let's do the six tallest in the back, all right? We don't want it too high. Come on, get everybody in the picture. And then spread out a little bit. Let's get... I think you're okay there, Coach. It'll work. All right. No height behind anybody. It doesn't work. All right, guys. Give me a good smile. I'm going to take a couple of pictures and make sure we get this right. Down to three. One, two, three. Stay there. Give me a good smile. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you.
Joey, I'll put you up here today.
Thank you. Thank you.
I didn't even have it in the back. I started this up before five. That was just later.
I wasn't. No, you were later. I just didn't like it. I didn't want to come. It was just like...
Oh, no. Thank you.
Ready?
I got blue. I don't know. Just three people just get...
Um, yeah. I'm good. I'm good.
I'll call the meeting to order. Do they have any special intentions?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Council Chair. Please keep in your prayers the family of Beth Purvis, who is a longtime Kenner resident. And she was an assistant at St. Elizabeth Ann Seaton School, and she recently passed away. So please keep her family in your prayers. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Yes, I'm still asking for prayers from my assistant. She'll be back. They will be bearing her mother on tomorrow, Vivian Hurtado. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wilmot?
Thank you. I have an uncle that lives in Baton Rouge who's having a real difficult time, and he's hospitalized right now. Please keep him in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
If we can all stand for the invocation? Father Cooper, Pastor from Divine Mercy Catholic Church, would you please lead us in the prayer?
Let us bow our heads and remember that we are in the presence of God. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and your support as we begin this Kenner City Council meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group of duly-elected representatives and citizens so as to nurture the bonds of community. We ask your blessing on the men and women who have been called to lead the community in which we live and work and play. Thank you for every seat that has been filled here today. Thank you for each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room. Only you truly know what we are setting out to accomplish this day. We have an idea, a vision, hints, and daily instructions. We have talents, abilities, and time to work. However, only you, Lord, can see in perfect detail the end of every beginning, every project, every season, every life. Nothing is ever in vain, for even mistakes and missteps are used for good. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with clarity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders of your people that they need. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those whom which we disagree, and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with reverence that your creation deserves. Bless this council meeting this evening, all those who are present, as well as the lives of those that we will encounter afterwards. Ready us to make every moment count. We ask all of this through Christ our Lord, amen. In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you, Father Cooper. Councilmember Brennan, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chairman, you have a quorum. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. We have correspondence, reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads. Mayor Glazer?
Thank you. Sorry about that. I was clarifying something. I've still got a couple things. Shouldn't take but a couple seconds. But first, I want to introduce the latest, the last deputy chief administrator officer that I'm bringing on board, Ms. Natalie Newton. She started one week ago today. So she's got a lot of experience in Kenner government and Jefferson Parish government, and she'll bring a lock to the table to help us from this day forward. I think a lot of you already know her, so. And what I'm going to do every month in the mayor's comments is give an update on citywide sales tax revenues. For July, it's up 18.35% compared to the same month of last year. So long as we keep going up, we'll be in good shape. Before this council meeting, we recognized some Barnable High School students that helped put down some sport courts in Susan Park Gym. Also, I know there was several volunteers and community members that have helped some council members clean up some little projects in their district. George Branigan finally got some help cleaning up the medians in District Four. Couple of weeks ago, Melody Lawson, Mike Spell, Joe Ellen Spell, Zachary Spell, Stacy Alessandro, Richard Brown, Ricky Lopes, Shirley Sessions, who's from another neighborhood, mine to be exact, and Paula Gandolfi passed by a few times to make sure they were doing it right. That's what I was told. In District Two, we had some cleanup on 21st Street between Williams and Roosevelt. Helping Councilman Swarth was Anthony Becknell, David Boudreau, I'm going to mess it up, Alan Dolesi, all right, Norman Files, and Pat Ubray. So they helped Councilman Swarth with a little project, which, look, we're going to get it back in good-looking shape, the city that is, if we have a lot more volunteers helping us out. So these are wonderful projects that y'all have, and we'll give you recognition the next couple of ones that you do. So I'm sure you have more on the table. Today, we had a staff meeting with the staff here, and I can report to you that we're coming close to the final organizational structure of the city, how are we going to have city government organized? We have eliminated and combined a bunch of departments. It was going to end up in overall savings to taxpayers. Hopefully, by next meeting, we'll have a pretty good number of how much we're going to save, you know? And then we're going to reintroduce and open the budget. Last meeting, you know, I said September. After the meeting, I was yelled at by several people that we have to have a public meeting, so it's probably going to be the month after that, so before we open it up and address it. So, and with that said, oh, Mr. Glorioso wants to inform that Building C, the third floor air condition is done, and next week, the fourth floor will be completed. So we'll be able to get back in that building on, it'll be fully occupied by the end of two weeks. And the LaSalle flagpoles at the end of Williams and LaSalle Park have been sanded and repainted. So they were in bad shape, so in and around that whole area, that was a project that went along with the painting of the light poles in the parking lot across from, what's it called? The DMV, which is actually moving back in also, but that was on state money. So hopefully, we'll get the city back up and running. I think there's going to be something from the floor with some council meetings going forward, you know, tonight. So with that, if you have any questions, I can answer them. If not, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mayor Glazer. Under resolutions, motions, and other items from the floor, I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Branigan, to amend the agenda to add Item 13B, a resolution temporarily suspending Council Rule Number Seven to relocate the Kenner City meetings, council meetings, to Heritage Hall at 303 Williams Boulevard in Kenner, Louisiana for the remainder of the calendar year. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to object to amending the agenda? Please come forward and state your objection. Seeing none, council members, please vote to amend your agenda as the clerk has read. Councilmember Branigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
McKenna?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Swarth?
Yes.
Lahad?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Under the consent agenda, I have Item One, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of July 22, 2022. Item Two is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. We have none. Item Three is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item Three A is application number 2274-22, New Orleans Air Coolers, to hold a public gathering on November 5, 2022, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for the purpose of a car show at the Esplanade Mall in Kenner, Louisiana. Item Three B is application number 2285-22, Devoted Dreamers Foundation, to hold a public gathering on August 5, 2022, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the purpose of a community dinner event in Kenner, Louisiana. Madam Chairman, that will conclude your consent agenda. Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Swarth. Council members, please vote. Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
McKenna?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Swarth?
Yes.
Lahad?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
We're now in a public hearing. If there's anyone to address the council, please come forward.
Good evening, Council. This is time to meet the Ashawn, Director of Community Development. What you have before you is a request for an amendment. As for those who are new on the council, every year, we get an allocation from HUD. You vote on that allocation, and we send it to HUD. If they agree, they send a grant agreement, and the mayor signs off. We go through and we execute those activities for that particular fiscal year. However, there are some time delays. We've had hurricanes. We've had the pandemic. So this goes back to 2015, when there were not enough projects finished, so we have a remaining amount of $49,000, and we had to find an eligible project. With CDBG funding, you have to meet a national objective. It has to be to assist a person who is income-eligible, or it has to be sent, I'm sorry, or it has to be that you help an area that's income-eligible. We found an area that was income-eligible, and we're going to do a street with that funding, because it contains three of our park areas on this particular street. So we're going to be doing the funding with that. We have it set up that way, we won't lose the funding, because we were notified by HUD. If we don't lose it, they will take it back. Any questions?
Councilmember Dunn?
I just have a comment. I want to thank you, Ms. Shaw. When I called and asked her about that, and you really explained it to me, and I'm so happy that you are not letting any of this money go, that you are finding somewhere to put it. So I really want to thank you for that.
All right. And thank you, Councilwoman Dunn, for reaching out to me. As I explained to you, we do have funding in several previous years. However, we have to get with finance to make sure they were correctly allocated. Once we do that, then we can sit down and talk about how we allocate those funds that we have available in the future.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Director. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenna, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot, to close your hearing. Council members, please vote. Councilmember Wilmot?
Yay.
McKenna?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Swarth?
Yes.
Lahad?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Under the public appearance agenda, we have Item Eight, public hearings for final passage. Item Eight A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 13,046. An ordinance authorized in a public hearing, Amendment Number Three, to the fiscal year 2015 Annual Action Plan of the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program for the Community Development Department. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenna, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot, to open your public hearing. Council members, please vote to open your hearing. Councilmember McKenna?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Swarth?
Yes.
Lahad?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
We're now in a public hearing. If there's anyone to address the council, please come forward.
Good evening, Council. This is time to meet the Ashawn, Director of Community Development. What you have before you is a request for an amendment. As for those who are new on the council, every year, we get an allocation from HUD. You vote on that allocation, and we send it to HUD. If they agree, they send a grant agreement, and the mayor signs off. We go through and we execute those activities for that particular fiscal year. However, there are some time delays. We've had hurricanes. We've had the pandemic. So this goes back to 2015, when there were not enough projects finished, so we have a remaining amount of $49,000, and we had to find an eligible project. With CDBG funding, you have to meet a national objective. It has to be to assist a person who is income-eligible, or it has to be sent, I'm sorry, or it has to be that you help an area that's income-eligible. We found an area that was income-eligible, and we're going to do a street with that funding, because it contains three of our park areas on this particular street. So we're going to be doing the funding with that. We have it set up that way, we won't lose the funding, because we were notified by HUD. If we don't lose it, they will take it back. Any questions?
Councilmember Dunn?
I just have a comment. I want to thank you, Ms. Shaw. When I called and asked her about that, and you really explained it to me, and I'm so happy that you are not letting any of this money go, that you are finding somewhere to put it. So I really want to thank you for that.
All right. And thank you, Councilwoman Dunn, for reaching out to me. As I explained to you, we do have funding in several previous years. However, we have to get with finance to make sure they were correctly allocated. Once we do that, then we can sit down and talk about how we allocate those funds that we have available in the future.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Director. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenna, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot, to close your hearing. Council members, please vote. Councilmember Wilmot?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Swarth?
Yes.
Lahad?
Yes.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
We're now in a public hearing. If there's anyone to address the council, please come forward.
Good evening, Council. This is time to meet the Ashawn, Director of Community Development. What you have before you is a request for an amendment. As for those who are new on the council, every year, we get an allocation from HUD. You vote on that allocation, and we send it to HUD. If they agree, they send a grant agreement, and the mayor signs off. We go through and we execute those activities for that particular fiscal year. However, there are some time delays. We've had hurricanes. We've had the pandemic. So this goes back to 2015, when there were not enough projects finished, so we have a remaining amount of $49,000, and we had to find an eligible project. With CDBG funding, you have to meet a national objective. It has to be to assist a person who is income-eligible, or it has to be sent, I'm sorry, or it has to be that you help an area that's income-eligible. We found an area that was income-eligible, and we're going to do a street with that funding, because it contains three of our park areas on this particular street. So we're going to be doing the funding with that. We have it set up that way, we won't lose the funding, because we were notified by HUD. If we don't lose it, they will take it back. Any questions?
Councilmember Dunn?
I just have a comment. I want to thank you, Ms. Shaw. When I called and asked her about that, and you really explained it to me, and I'm so happy that you are not letting any of this money go, that you are finding somewhere to put it. So I really want to thank you for that.
All right. And thank you, Councilwoman Dunn, for reaching out to me. As I explained to you, we do have funding in several previous years. However, we have to get with finance to make sure they were correctly allocated. Once we do that, then we can sit down and talk about how we allocate those funds that we have available in the future.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Director. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenna, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot, to close your hearing. Council members, please vote. Councilmember Wilmot?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Swarth?
Yes.
Lahad?
Yes.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenna?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item Nine is ordinances for the sale, purchase, transfer, lease, and or alienation of movable property. We have none. Item Ten is opening of bids. We have none. Item Eleven is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item Twelve is other ordinances for final passage. Item Twelve A is summary ordinance number 13,045. An ordinance repealing ordinance number 11,958, which amended Section 2-13 of the Kenner Code of Ordinances, to mandate all public record requests be copied to the city council within five days of receipt, and to require that the city council be notified upon satisfaction of all public records request. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Council members, please vote. We have an amendment correct? Yes. Yes, ma'am. Madam Chairman, we've received a request, at the request of Councilmember Branigan, to amend this piece. We will be amending it to Section One. We'll now read that Section 2-13B is amended to read as follows. B, within 31 days of receipt of all requests for public records, notice of said request shall be forward, shall be sent to all members of the Kenner City Council. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Brennan on the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Mr. Teft, would you like to speak on the amendment or the legislation? Council members, please vote on the amendment, as the clerk has read into the record. Councilman Swarth?
Yes.
Lahad?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenna?
Yes.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to amend. Back to your original motion as amended. Mr. Teft, would you like to speak?
Ah, Greg Tab, 3720 West Layla Drive in Kenner. The reason I'm up here is because last year, in January, when this got approved, several things were said that night. One was this was good government. One was that it would give us a timeline as to when things get done. It also said that the council needs to know what, when these things come through and when they get resolved. And it was said that they want to be in the loop, and it said it gives additional information to the council, and that they wanted to be aware of what was going on. And then it was also mentioned that when this was introduced, the city attorney at that time didn't even, wasn't even conferred with or had any input to the legislation. Now, I'm not up here to criticize you. What I'm up here for is, if it was all of those good things that I just mentioned in January of this year, why all of a sudden do we want to repeal it? Because it makes no difference who the administration is. Y'all made the case that we needed to have an oversight to make sure that these things are happening. So I'm just a little bit miffed as to why now, after the elections and everything has been done, we now want to repeal it. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Branigan?
Well, Mr. Teft, we are not repealing this legislation. We are amending this legislation. I have worked with Eric Mund in the city's attorney's office, and basically, the reason that the legislation was put in place last year was because the prior administration was not responding to PRRs in a timely fashion, and it cost you $5,700 as a taxpayer in the city of Kenner. And that got under my skin. So when I talked to Attorney Mund, and he is producing a spreadsheet that gives the date in, the date finished, what it's about, and who sent it, and I'm trying to lessen the load on the attorney's office, that they don't have to do it weekly, because I don't think we're going to run into that problem again. And you mentioned that the city attorney at the time didn't know about the legislation. You are correct, because I do not have to have my legislation drafted by the city attorney's office. In the past, Ms. Sala and I did not see eye to eye on a lot of legislation, and that's why I went elsewhere. And that's my decision to do that. But I do not feel that we need the reporting weekly, because according to Attorney Mund, they are answering the PRRs, and hopefully, we do not have anything missed and have to pay legal fees again. I think that was totally ridiculous.
Thank you, Councilmember Branigan. Anyone else?
I would just also like to say that, and just to point out, that we are getting this information, so we are going to be, you know, as council members, we're still tracking it. It's not like we're eliminating this requirement. So, you know, we always reserve the right to get it more, you know, more frequently So, you know, that we always reserve the right to get it more, you know, more frequently if we want. We're working well with the attorney's office. So we're just, you know, working together. It's still good government legislation and we have, we're maintaining that oversight. So it's not like we're eliminating anything. We're just working better with the city's attorney's office at this point. Yes, Councilwoman Branigan?
And one other thing I want to add is I have total confidence in this attorney, city attorney's office, and who the attorneys are. And hopefully, we will not be in that situation again. But if it did occur, then I will be amending this legislation again. But I don't feel that we need to have them send it to us once a week in the state that we're in now.
Seeing no further discussion?
Just to add this to it is that while I understand what you're saying there, it doesn't mean, and I don't want to use this word, but it's the only word because of my education level I can use. If we have a rogue administration in the future, this would already be in place to ensure. Because y'all wanted the oversight to make sure that it didn't happen again. You're right. Maybe this administration may be going to make that, you know, make it all work and do what they're supposed to do. But if you have an administration down the road that doesn't, then we're back to where we were. And again, I'm not here to criticize. I'm just here to say that, you know, we, there was a lot of discussion, if you go back to January, about it. And I understand it, I said it then, that it, I understand why some of the things you're wanting to do, you're doing. I didn't agree with the way you did them. But I still say that if you passed it once, you may want to look at it because, again, this administration may do well. But we may have an administration down the road that may not. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teft. Mr. Branigan?
And I understand that concern down the road. And hopefully, there will be a council member in place at that time to be able to take action as I did when I saw the problems we had with the prior administration.
Councilman Wilmot?
Just for clarity's purpose, the law is still going to be on the books. We're not, we're not getting rid of it. It's not being repealed. We're just changing the amount of time. So instead of being weekly, it's going to be monthly. And that is what's felt by this council and this body, that it's acceptable at this time. And that's why we're going forward with this legislation. And it's going to be a tweak. So on the books in the future, if there is a problem, we can always come back and change it and make it weekly. So just for clarity. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilmot. Seeing no questions? Councilmembers, please vote.
Councilman Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yes.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by councilmembers. Item 13A is a resolution appointing Lieutenant Louis Tusa Jr. as Kenner Police Department Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Representative for the term, which ends July 30th, 2025.
Motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmembers, please vote. Any questions?
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 13B is a resolution temporarily suspending Council Rule Number 7 to relocate the Kenner council meetings to Heritage Hall 303 Williams Boulevard, Kenner, Louisiana, for the remainder of the calendar year for 2022. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. Any discussion? Seeing none? Councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 13,025. An ordinance authorized the Department of Finance to pay invoice number 12004 to Elos Environmental LLC in the amount of $46,331.70.
Motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. Councilmembers, please vote. Any comments? I do have a comment on this. I know that we deferred this for more information from the Finance Department. Was the mayor's office able to get any clarification on this item?
Yes, we were. It was a contract that had a cap on it not to exceed, that ended on March 30th of this year. And work was still being assigned to this company after the cap was reached. And it exceeded it and needs council approval to pay the overage. So it's work that's been done. The contract ended in March, but there was still being assigned work.
Okay, just some clarification questions. Who, who assigned the work or what department designed, assigned the work? And do they still have an active current contract?
They don't, they don't have this, this contract, no. And the assignments came out of someone in the mayor's office, the mayor's staff.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Branigan?
What was the cap, what was the cap on this contract that they exceeded?
Give her a second, but Mike Powell will answer a question also while Liz looks it up.
The cap on the contract was $200,000. It was originally, an ordinance was originally adopted, apparently erroneously, saying $200,000 annually. That ordinance was later amended to make it just $200,000 for one year. The contract expired on March 30th, I believe, or March 1st, excuse me. But apparently, the administration continued issuing work to this company, which continued doing work to the $246,000.
Whose responsibility was it to ensure that, you know, between that gap, that if they were incurring work, would it have been the mayor's office to ensure that that was?
That would be my belief, it would be. Because finance wouldn't know that it's happening until they get the bill. And by then, it's apparently too late, so. If it matters, they did produce a usable work product that the city is in fact using. In particular, the EOC is using the work product. I don't understand, it's all virtual stuff and I don't do well with virtual things. But I'm told that the product that they produced is usable and very good.
Is it something that is, has to be maintained as well? Or is that something the city is maintaining?
I don't believe it needs to be maintained. It may need to be updated from time to time. They apparently located streetlights and traffic signals and all manner of things on a GIS system. So, all of which is recoverable. And in my discussion with Doug Dote, he tells me that he uses it daily, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Branigan and Councilman Lahat after that.
I'm good.
Councilman Lahat?
And the work was completed. We didn't verify that, the extra beyond the cap.
Yes, the work was all done satisfactorily. It was just that they did more work than they were, than, than we had money to pay them. Contract expired. All of the work we're being billed for was done before the expiration of the contract. It just exceeded the $200,000 cap.
So the proper process would have been to come back for us and increase the, increase the contract level?
Yes, ma'am.
So they, so they, so they didn't follow the council process, is what you're saying?
I don't know if the people requesting the addition of work were aware of where they were with the, with the cap on the contract. And maybe that system was not in place at the time. To, I don't know for sure. I know what happened. I don't know why it happened.
Do you want to date? When did that occur? The date, time period, approximate?
Oh, it was billings for the, I believe, the month of February. Is that?
February, okay.
January and February.
Okay.
Okay.
January and February.
Okay.
Of this year.
Councilmember Branigan?
So when a contract is coming up to the cap, Liz? And so we're paying the bills and then we're getting close to the cap. And they keep working on a contract. Can we shut that off or?
So the way it works?
What's the process?
So the way it works, each contract is obviously assigned to a specific department. It's that department head who needs to monitor their contracts. And as they assign work to contractors, it's in the accounting system. They check, they monitor, they know the contract. Like Mr. Power said, for a service contract like this, they enter check requests after the fact. So I would never know that they allowed the contractor to perform a service until I get the bill. And in this case, we got the bill, it came to finance, and it got stopped because the cap was exceeded. So the only way for me to pay is to come before y'all to get it basically ratified.
Yeah, and, and when you look at the charges on those two months, I mean, some of them were $75, some of them were 600. It's, it's a, it's a million charges, so.
Yeah, and like I said, the work was completed. It is, you know, good work. Unfortunately for the vendor, it just wasn't being monitored.
Okay, so we get another Christmas present in July.
Councilmember Wilmot?
I guess this question is for Mr. Powell, it's a legal question. Did they have the authority to act?
I beg your pardon, sir?
Did the contractor have the authority from the city to act under the contract?
The contractor was receiving work orders from city employees who were authorized to issue them. And he was authorized to perform work. The fact that he exceeded the cap, I don't know that, that he's responsible for that. The, the, there was a breakdown in communication, obviously, between the administration and this contractor. And the people who were issuing the work orders were unaware that anywhere, that they were anywhere near the cap. Okay, so they? I understand that won't happen again. But the work was done in January and February. The contract expired March 1st. We, we received the invoice, or the invoice was dated February 28th.
So it's, it sounds like we have the legal responsibility to pay this tab.
Absolutely. The work was performed and the work was performed satisfactorily. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want you, I want you to reiterate again, will that ever happen again?
I defer to Liz.
Yes.
I think it's really a mayor comment. I think we have confidence.
We, like I said last time, we are reviewing every contract. We found several contracts that have expired that should have been renewed because when it's services that are in response to a disaster. So I'll make the comment now, I think most of y'all know that I'm, I'm going to sign a professional services contract to the limit where I can sign without your approval, which is $49,000 for certain, you know, responses to a disaster. And I'll let you know and then we'll address it to raise the cap, you know, in front of this body. But we need contracts in place if we have a storm next week. You know, that's kind of what we're finding as we're going through them, pretty much daily. It's, and this is one, we put things in place where this is not going to happen. It's going to be where if there's a cap on it, we'll have some indicators or some, when we are approaching the cap, when contracts are coming six months to the expiration date, we'll have some notices in it also so that we can, you know, not fall into this again, that we're paying things months after. And this is just like coming to the council raising the cap. You know, we can't pay it unless y'all approve it. They did the work, they owed the money, and it's just a matter of we got to put the systems in place that it doesn't happen again.
Yes, and I guess my only question is, and I know we deferred this from a previous meeting, but why, when did we get the invoice? And why was there such a gap? If the work was done in January and February, was the, was the invoice received in March?
Yes, ma'am. Apparently, the invoice is dated February 28th. So how it was transmitted to the city, I'm not sure, whether it was emailed or postal service. But the contract expired by the time the city got the invoice. It had expired on March 1st.
Okay. Yes.
All right. Just, just in our discussions with a lot of the directors that are here, we found out that a lot of them were unable to manage their, their contracts. So a lot of times, you have somebody else managing your contract and not watching what's going on. So to you, Councilwoman Dunn, I promise, and I believe everybody here, that those are the things that don't happen. That's why, you know, we come to you for a contract cap increase if we exceed ours. That's our responsibility to do so. So absolutely won't happen again.
Councilwoman Brennan?
Ms. Fowler, when you say the directors were not able to manage the cap, the?
Manage the contract themselves.
I'm sorry, the contract.
I think a lot of that was centralized within the mayor's office with the contract management. So of the previous administration. So a lot of, a lot of the department heads were unaware of, you know, different contracts that they may be part of. You know, I believe code enforcement may have had some benefit from these GIS maps, but they weren't aware of the contract. That I know personally because I spoke with the code director and, and some of the staff. So there was a lot of instances that we're finding and uncovering at this point where a lot of people were uninformed of what contracts they had.
Thank you.
And, and like you said, you're working on best practices in order to improve the contract communication and management of that, right?
Yes, ma'am. As, as the mayor was stating previously, we need to have emergency contracts in place. So we're trying to fill gaps with, if we're doing a professional services contract underneath that 50,000 margin, it's only to serve us for this very limited period of time. Anything in excess of that, we have to come to you and we'll, we'll do so.
Okay, great, thank you. I appreciate that. Seeing no further comments? Councilmembers, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Morella?
Al Morella, 4260 East Layola Drive, 50 district, 50 years. First of all, I want to express my appreciation to the administration for bringing this to the people. Another step in the right direction. But let me remind everybody and anybody who's on this city's payroll, I don't care whether you're an elected official or whether you're an appointed official. You work for the people of Kenner. You do not work for the mayor. The mayor appoints you on behalf of the people of Kenner. So if the mayor tries to hide anything and puts us in a position like this, it's incumbent of the director, don't worry about your job, we're going to take care of that. But it's incumbent of the director of that department or anybody who's out when we paying down here to bring this to the people of Kenner. And heck, what hurting somebody's feelings or heck with about your job. The people of Kenner is your employer. And we need to know things like this. We don't need this to fester for three, four months, five months down the road before we find out about it. Okay, that's all I have to say. Anybody got any comments, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Morella. Councilwoman Branigan?
Al, that's why you're hearing about this now because it was just uncovered.
I know.
You should have made that statement six months ago.
We didn't know about it.
I understand that.
We know about it now. So that's why I'm here now. Thank you, Council.
Seeing no further comment? Councilmember, please vote, please vote.
Councilman McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 15B, summary ordinance number 13,033. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from NOLA Painting and Finishing LLC to furnish and install roofing at 624 Williams Boulevard in accordance with letter bid 22-2009 in the amount of $26,992 for the Department of General Services.
Motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmembers, please vote, or unless we have someone to speak. Councilmember Schworth, would you like to introduce?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Ellis, could you please step up to the podium? Please state your name for us and your company name.
Yeah, it's John Ellis. NOLA Painting and Finishing. Any questions? Is there anything you need to know?
Just tell us a little bit about your company, how you got into it.
So I, I've been in business now, at least for my own business, since about 2019 in the local area. I've been in the construction business about 30 years. We've, I've experienced a lot of different areas in the federal government and in the private sector. So experience wise, I think we should be able to handle the project. We want to make sure we give you what you need that will be better than what you have. The idea is to be cost effective. So what we want to do is I see that based upon what's been brought together by, I guess, the General Services Department, is they had something they had set up that they, we put the scope together. So we want to make sure that you guys understand that instead of just giving you just a plain project, we want to give you better than what you are actually offering, which might increase a little bit in cost, only because when the project was awarded to us, that was several months ago and costs have increased. So knowing what I know, we want to make sure you guys understand we're going to do the right thing for the city of Kenner.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. I also want to say I called you weeks ago and you couldn't make the last meeting because it was like hours before. But I understand that.
Right.
But again, thank you so much for coming up here today. Look forward to working with you now and in the future. The price that you gave us was fantastic. The price that you gave us was fantastic. I think the citizens of Kenner are saving thousands of dollars, nine hundreds of dollars by this project. And we look forward to seeing what your finished product is going to look like. And if so, we may be doing business for a while.
We look forward to it ourselves. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yes. Mr. Councilwoman Wilmont?
Mr. Ellis? If you can, I just had a few just general questions.
Sure.
Because it looks like you're appearing on the agenda with us three times. It looks like consecutively. So it's three roofing jobs. And if you will, could you just mention the projects? It looks like 624 Williams, we have a fire station number 36.
Right.
And then we have River, Rivertown Church.
Exactly.
If you can, just, if you will, describe the project a little bit for each one.
So basically, the most complex of the projects would probably be 624. That's actually a shingle and a flat roof combination. You've got about 52 squares of, we're going to use architectural shingles on the roof preferably because that'd be the better idea. And then you actually have a very flat roof that's over there on that community center too. So about 20, 20 squares of that. We have to do a total tear off of each. And replacement, we're going to use synthetic paper as opposed to just regular tar paper. We prefer to, once again, give you a better product than what it is. And the same thing with the church, it's kind of architectural shingles, it's about 36 square and about 32 square over at Fire Station 35. 36.
All three are being...
35 is another we've got to worry about later.
All three are being done with architectural shingles? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And they get, it's got a longer life to it, I presume?
The ones they prescribe was the Owens Corning architectural shingles. And we want to give you a higher wind rated shingle because if we have another storm that comes up just like Ida, the whole idea is to make sure we don't see this twice. That could have probably been avoided. I've run into a lot of people with brand new shingles that have architectural, three tabs not used, next to never nowadays. So if we go with that, you have a better chance of not, they'll be able to use the fire stations and/or the church or whatever the other facility probably right away after the storm unless Mother Nature's really bad.
And you projected the materials are going to be easier to get at this time?
I can get them right away. There won't be any acquisition problems.
Very good. But thank you for your help with the city of Kenner. We appreciate you.
Indeed.
Councilwoman Brannigan?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted, I looked at the per square price and those per square prices for commercial properties are in line. So thank you for getting that done for us.
We prefer to keep it within reason. I knew what the average was that they were charging for a lot of other government projects. And I didn't feel the need to do that. I says, I want to give you a fair project, I want to give you a fair product, and I want to be able to do more business with you. So if I keep it within line, you'll say, hey, let's keep the budget at least in check. So that was the whole idea.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Mayor Glazer? Or CEO?
Mr. Ellis, I got a couple of questions. Being that this is a lump sum contract, all three of them, okay? You are responsible for establishing the number of squares, correct?
Yes.
And in all likelihood, nowadays, most roofers use probably Eagle Vision. So if you underestimate the number of squares, that would be on you. You still got to re-roof.
Yes.
So you feel comfortable with the number of squares? And every one of these contracts had two or three bidders.
Right.
And, and you were the low bid on every one of them. So the responsibility is on you for any underage of quantities, whether it was the felt or whether it was the number of squares.
Right.
And drip beads, bends and stuff like that, it would all be on you.
Yes, 100%.
Thank you.
We use roofer, by the way. Eagle Vision or Eagle View is what they actually use for the insurance companies. They've been wrong too.
Oh, really? Okay.
So that's why we vary on what we prefer to use.
So you feel comfortable with the number of squares?
I feel very comfortable. Very comfortable. The only thing I'm going to bring up is, is now with the way the bidding process works, and this is just kind of a later on down the road thing to think about, is we bid this months ago. So that's a snapshot in time. So the price we gave you has increased because we know things have gone up. So that's something we would have to take into effect on how we would do. There should be a section in maybe General Services that should be putting these projects together, putting a not to exceed cost. And then you send it out for bid and then you say, oh, okay, so they're all the win line, they, we know what they turned in. If you're turning in roofing projects, make sure that you have a footnote based on how many squares. Because the prices you received could be way more squares, they could be off. We're not comparing apples to apples. So that's something to take into consideration later down the road, specifically with this. So... That's about it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Ellis. Councilmembers, please vote.
Councilwoman Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Brannigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenny?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 15C, summary ordinance number 13,035. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from NOLA Painting and Finishing LLC to furnish and install roofing for Fire Station 36 in accordance with letter bid 22-2013 in an amount of $14,250 for the Department of General Services.
Motion by Councilmember Schworth, seconded by Councilmember McKenny. Councilmembers, please vote.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Brannigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenny?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 15D, summary ordinance number 13,036. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from NOLA Painting and Finishing LLC to furnish and install roofing at Rivertown Church located in Rivertown in accordance with letter bid 22-2012 in the amount of $12,866 for the Department of General Services.
Motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Wilmont. Councilmembers, please vote. Oh, Councilmember Dunn.
Yeah, I want to speak on this one. I did meet with Mark in Rivertown in order to look at the church. We were losing revenues because of the fact that this was not done. And this could have easily, I think, been rectified some time ago. So I'm, I'm happy that Eric came up and spoke with us about this because this is a very low bid. And if we can get this done in a timely manner, we will not continue to lose revenues in the Rivertown area.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dunn. Councilmembers, please vote. Oh, Councilmember Wilmont?
I, I guess I just have one question, if Mr. Ellis is still here?
Yes.
Oh, good. Yeah, I just wanted to note that we do have three projects and, and the councilwoman did bring up a, a, a point that's very important. How, how long will it take for these projects for completion? Do you have an idea?
Two to three days apiece. We probably could do that one first. We'll prioritize whatever you need us to prioritize.
Yes.
Okay.
Because I knew that one was actually one that's been waiting to be taken care of because I looked on the inside. It's not only the roof, but the interior looks like it needs some help too. So everything, top to bottom. So we can do that one first so they can continue any work on the inside.
Okay.
Because I, I did do a site visit on that and, and that's pretty important to us because they can get this, you know, back together in, in the right amount of time. And I think that's very important.
We can do that one first.
Sounds like it would prime and of course with the administration, with their input and the councilwoman, I, I think that would be good.
The community center looks like it needs to be done too. Because I noticed there's the director that was in there, she was working in the, the conference room because her office was a jambles. So I says, as soon as we can get whatever done in the priority you want, maybe we can work on to the next phase of the project to get her back in there.
But you would do one project at a time, Clark?
I've only been awarded the roof project. So when they send out the other, you know, the other solicitation, the other project, we can bid on that too and we can go back to back. I mean, we can do all of it.
No, I'm talking about the three that you have here right now.
Work them just one at, we'll work ones, one right after the other.
Okay.
Right in conjunction.
Very good. And if you will, get together with the administration.
It's all right in the same vicinity anyway. It's all right, the church, the community center and the fire station, it's all right there.
Okay. And if, again, if you will, get together with the councilwoman and administration so we can get some times.
Sure.
So we can get the right one done first and so forth. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Thank you, Councilwoman Wilmont. See no additional questions? Councilmembers, please vote.
Councilman Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Brannigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenny?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 15E is a resolution approving supplemental number three to the agreement with Richard C. Lambert Consultants LLC dated May 20th, 2019 for construction, engineering and inspection related services for West Esplanade Bridges. At Duncan Canal, State Project Number H Period 011731, Period 6. Federal Aid Project Number H 011731, Period 6. Kenner Public Works Project Number 2014-001A-CIP for an increase of $63,274 for the Department of Public Works.
That's a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenny. Any questions?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Councilmember Lahat?
Okay. I've been coming to these meetings almost a year now, in terms of the Duncan Canal. And George, I haven't had an opportunity to really discuss this with you. But this is the project out here, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I came to the status meeting that the previous administration had. I, I learned nothing from that meeting when I was here that night. It was a very obtuse thing as to what they said. I, I understood nothing, there were no specifics. I know the, the Duncan Canal has been a very point of contention. I'm hesitant to vote for anything more in this project. And I've heard of potential litigation, I've, I've heard of things. I need someone to explain this to me, being a councilman of this area, as to why I should vote for this? If there's a procedure now to control the costs on this thing? What, I know people have said many reasons why it's taken so long to build. I know Ida, COVID, et cetera. But there's, I mean, there's been well-founded public comments on this. It's been going on a very long time. If someone can just tell me, and maybe the current administration does not know the history obviously, or pretty much everybody's new. I understand that too. But it's just, it's hard for me to consider voting for something on Duncan at this point unless there's something really well-founded that I do not know about.
Yes. It, it took quite a while to finish that project. The project is for practical purposes finished already. Okay? This particular item deals with inspection and testing services required by the federal government and the state DOTD on federally projects. This particular project is a federally project. This is not a construction change order. This is an amendment, okay, for resident inspection services. And the reason for the amendment is because the project, the construction of that project experienced a number of delays. And as a result of those delays, the federal government days that resident inspection and services be continued, okay? And testing as well until the project is completed. Being that it's a federally project, the city's financial obligation is only 20% of that cost. So the city's financial obligation is 20% of $63,000. And the funds are available on the, the Kenner's 2030 plan. But this is just resident inspection and testing, okay? This is not a change order for the contractor, hard rock, construction.
Would this be here absent the delays, the same charge in your opinion?
Will this, say that again?
The same cost being put in front of us, would that still be here absent any delays in the project because it's a compliance type of inspection?
I can't say if we're going to, we're still dealing with, you know, maybe one more change order or maybe two change orders on this project that are construction related. So there's a possibility that we may have another increase, but it should not be as much as $63,000 and we still would be liable for 20%. And the only thing I want to add to that is that the DOTD has approved this amendment. So, and the DOTD represents the federal government. So I don't anticipate any problems whatsoever with the federal government denying this request.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lahat. Mr. Morella?
Al Morella, 4260 East Royal Drive, 50th District, 50 years. I want to direct this to you, Councilman Lahat and Jose Gonzalez here. When we got information, as information came before the council and citizens, what the delays were, what the causes was on that project, I came up here and I suggested that we put a red flag on these people who went, who was behind schedule, cost the city of Kenner a lot more than what we should have paid for that project. A lot of it was on them. And I hope that we have it documented that they was not, the job they did was not satisfactory to the city of Kenner as far as costing us money and coming in behind schedule. So I hope that there's some documentation by the city that they are not a responsible bidder. And if they try to attempt to bid on any other contracts in this city, that they be disqualified from doing so. So to give you another insight on it, Councilman Lahat, that's what I had to say at this podium back then.
I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you, Al.
Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Mayor Glazer?
And I'll be brief, this $63,000 is not going to be the last we get, just to prepare yourself in the future. There's going to be construction change orders that's a significant, significant amount of money. That's kind of what I was talking to Councilman Lahat, that it, you know, this council is going to have to come up with a decision once we receive it in the amount. So it's, it's, we anticipating something substantial. Don't know the exact amount, but it's going to be a lot.
Will that be for the inspector and the inspections or will that also be for the construction company?
No, that will be strictly for constructing the contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Y'all have to make the decision on, you know, what avenue to take.
I mean, Mr. Powers, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Lahat?
Mr. Powers is, I know you've, it's only been a month since you've been back. Is there a potential for litigation here? Is there a high potential, do you know at this point? Or if you can't answer right now, it's fine. I understand that. There is?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
For what I know of the project, yes.
Okay. That makes my decision. Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Brannigan?
Jose, if I'm understanding or hearing correct, basically, we owe 20% of this and we should not get, we should not buck this because basically the state's paying the 80%, correct? So we don't want to...
No, the, the federal government's paying the 80%.
80%.
The city's picking up the 20% match. Unfortunately for us, the construction of the project, which is where all the dollars are, are not 80/20. They're 50/50. So whenever we do get that change order, we're not dealing with a 20% match. We're dealing with a 50% match. We're not there yet. I'm sure that we're going to challenge that and, and the DOTD is going to have to agree to it. The federal government's going to have to agree to it. And more important, the city's going to have to agree to it. And whether we end up in litigation or not, that remains to be seen at this time.
So basically, the point is, you, you don't want to just want to, you don't just want to win the battle, you want to win the war, obviously. And this piece is not something that we should be fighting about.
This has, you know, whether you approve it or not approve it, it has nothing to do with the change orders that are expected to come down the pipe. This is something for resident inspection and testing services that are mandated by the federal government, the state DOTD on all federal projects. So whether we approve it or not, it has no impact on the contractor's change orders that will be coming our way in the near future.
Okay.
Councilwoman Dunn?
If, if the federal government approved this, then we cannot disapprove it because they will get their 80% from them, right?
Good question. If, if we do not approve this after the state DOTD that's servicing the capacity as the program managers for the federal government, no doubt they will create friction between us, the state DOTD and the federal government. And, and that friction might extend into all the federally projects that we may want to, you know, apply for federal funds. So it is a good question. This is a, you know, yeah, it sounds like a lot of money. Our match is 20%. The state DOTD has approved it, which means the feds will approve it. This is not the challenge. The challenge is coming down the pipe.
And correct, correct me if I'm wrong, this increase is directly related to the delays in the construction of it, because all they doing is monitoring the construction, and they, they around longer than they should have been, and their bills go up. So that's where we're going to fight at the end when we get the last change order and the last bill.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmembers, please vote.
Councilman Lahat?
No.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yay.
Willmott?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Motion passes six one. Councilmember Lahat is opposed. Item fifteen F is a resolution approving change order number one, final to the construction agreement with Cass Brothers Incorporated, dated January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, regarding the Kenner FEMA Street renovation FEMA DR sixteen oh three PW two oh eight, third, three one project, decreasing the contract amount by one hundred nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy cents, adding forty calendar days, and accepting the project as substantially complete by the Department of Public Works.
Motion by Councilmember Swarth, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. Any questions? Councilmembers, please vote.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yay.
Willmott?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen G is a resolution approving change order number two to the agreement with Ram J Construction LLC, dated October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, regarding Lincoln Manor subdivision drainage improvements project, facility planning and control project number fifty dash MF one dash two zero dash zero one, City of Kenner project number PW dash twenty twenty dash six dash DR, for an increase of thirty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifteen cents for the Department of Public Works.
Motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Councilmembers, please vote. Oh, I apologize. Mr. Morella.
Anybody want to go before me? Anybody got something to say over there? Al Morella, forty-two sixty, East Loyola Drive, Fifth District, fifty years. I'd like to get an explanation on why the increase on this project from somebody in the Public Works Department. You can give us a little explanation, what, why the increase?
I sure can. This is a one-point-three-million-dollar project. It's being financed with state capital outlay money, which means state capital outlay money's financing seventy-five percent of the construction cost. The city's got to come up with a twenty-five percent match. And the work entail drainage improvements throughout Lincoln Manor, between Thirty and Thirty-first Street, and somehow falls into the canal that runs parallel to I-ten. While the work was going on, we realized that there would be a need within the scope of work to call mill and overlay Thirty Street between the Duncan Canal and, I believe, Ohio. We approached the state, facility planning that controls state capital outlay, they allow for the overlay. When the overlay was put in place, we had to stripe the roadway being Thirty Street, you know, kind of a major or collector road. We had to stripe the roadway, put reflectorized markers. So what we got out of that, it was a good thing for the city because we got seventy-five percent state outlay money, and something that was not in the original concept of the project. It just called for drainage improvement. We just added that to the scope of work.
All right, thank you, Jose. Anybody got any comments, any questions?
I do. Mr. Morella, and it really looks good.
Thank you, young lady. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morella. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Councilmembers, please vote. Oh, Council, Councilmember Willmott.
Thank, thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, as far as Thirty Street's concerned, I understand we have some overlay there that it probably takes up about a third of the stretch, from behind Sam's all the way to the Carmax, if you will. And so it's probably about a quarter or a third. So I want to say about a half of that section is in deplorable shape. Is there anything that we're getting ready to do on that portion of the street?
No doubt. I do go to Sam's a lot. That's where I meet Al from time to time. And yes, that section of Thirty Street that was not overlaid is in bad shape, especially around that curb area.
Yes.
It's a project that is on our radar. We don't have the funds right now. Unfortunately, it did not fall within the limits of that state capital outlay project. Now, we have a phase two of that capital, state capital outlay project. Unfortunately, the phase two is between Thirty-first Street and the other canal. So we're not going to be able to use state capital outlay money. So if, if we overlay that section of roadway, which is badly needed, it's going to be strictly with city funds. Now, that's one project that we're going to put on a wish list for all the grant money that may be available out there. You know, we got an infrastructure bill that is going to allocate, you know, a good amount of money to our area. You know, hopefully, we'll get our fair share. And that's going to be one of the projects that's going to be on the wish list. Whether it's going to be a high priority compared to other projects, that remains to be seen. But I totally agree with you, that section of roadway from probably Ohio all the way to, you know, where it curves back into Loyola, needs an overlay. And I'm going to estimate the cost probably within the next few days, and we're going to try to find a funding source.
Thank, thank you for that explanation. Thank you.
Yes, Tom, you know, I've been working on that project, trying to get some money. I'm running all over the city, but that's, that's very high on our list. And, you know, because everybody goes to Sam's, and it should have been done. So we are working on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, please vote.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yay.
Willmott?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen H is a resolution accepting the project as complete for the wastewater treatment plant, number three, waste pit improvements project by Volute Incorporated for the Department of Wastewater.
Motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. Councilmembers, please vote.
Councilman McKinney?
Yay.
Willmott?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item sixteen is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item sixteen A is an ordinance amending ordinance number eleven thousand sixty-two, adopted by the City of Kenner on March seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen, entitled Unified Development Code of the City of Kenner, more particularly amending and rezoning a sixty-five thousand, five hundred and twelve square foot section of the unimproved Twenty-third Street right-of-way, formerly Charlotte Avenue, bordering squares eighty-seven, eighty-nine, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, and ninety, Bainbridge Office and Industrial Park subdivision, to HI, Heavy Industrial, and directing, authorizing, and empowering the planning director for the City of Kenner to alter and amend the official zoning map of the City of Kenner, Louisiana. Item sixteen B is an ordinance approving a general advertising sign on the sixty-five thousand, five hundred and twelve square foot portion of the unimproved Twenty-third Street right-of-way, formerly Charlotte Avenue, bordering squares eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, and ninety, Bainbridge Office and Industrial Park subdivision. Item sixteen C is an ordinance amending ordinance fifty-nine thirty-one, adopted September seventeenth, nineteen eighty-seven, which approved the shopping center and certain C-two uses on parcel G, Chateau Estates South subdivision, and approving dog stop of Kenner LLC to operate a pet daycare center with overnight boarding on parcel G, Chateau Estates South subdivision. Item sixteen D is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Sorrento Lumber Company Incorporated to supply building materials in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-two dash sixty-six eighty-two, in an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen E is an ordinance authorizing the Director of Community Development Department, as the mayor's designate, to sign any and all documents required by the Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD for funding received and applied for by the City of Kenner through the Community Development Department, including but not limited to applications for funding, grant agreements, certifications, and ratifying the signature of all environmental reviews for entities assuming HUD environmental responsibilities and other regulations, forms, et cetera, for the Community Development Department. Item sixteen F is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of office supplies on an ass-needed basis utilizing Jefferson Parish Contract fifty-five dash two oh three fifty-five with Louisiana Office Products Incorporated, bid proposal number fifty dash zero zero one three seven five nine one, in an amount not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars annually. Item sixteen G is an ordinance approving amendment number one to the agreement with, between the City of Kenner and Leblanc Fantasi Villio LLC, dated December twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, to amend the terms of payment for the legal department. Item sixteen H is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from BLD Services LLC to provide preventative maintenance for existing sanitary and storm sewers, including service laterals in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-two dash sixty-six seventy-three, in an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars annually for two years for the Department of Wastewater. Item seventeen is reports from the council and our special committees.
Any councilmembers have anything to say?
Item eighteen is new business. We have none. Item nineteen is unfinished business and are motions to reconsider or remove from a tabled position. We have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Mr. Morella?
Al Morella, forty-two sixty, East Loyola Drive, Fifth District, fifty years. I want to make special mention, two very good friends of mine, long-term residents of Kenner, Michael Young, recently passed away, Walter Mazon, just recently passed away two weeks apart. And let's keep the Mazon family and the Young family in our thoughts and prayers. Okay? Last week, article in the Advocate, airport is going to switch to a eighty-five million-dollar project, a road link to rail, and they're going to stop the flyover project now, which might not be completed till next year sometime. My question is, what input does the city of Kenner have in this change and delaying the flyover project that's not too far from being completed? I want to know what input this city had, our councilwoman, Dee Dunn, the two councilors large in the administration. Was there any meetings concerning this, what input that we have? Now, the rest of my time, I want to give a little history. Anniversary's coming up. August sixth, nineteen forty-five, first atomic bomb was exploded on Hiroshima, Japan. The bomb was dubbed Little Boy. It was an uranium bomb. Three days later, another one was dropped, dubbed Fat Man, on Nagasaki. And that was a plutonium bomb, which resulted in the unconditional surrender of Japan. The official surrender was on September the second, onboard the USS Missouri, the battleship in Tokyo Bay. Now, some people to this day make questions. Was it necessary to drop those two bombs? Well, a lot of people may not know this, there was an operation codename Downfall, where three hundred thousand American troops and Allied troops was going to go into Tokyo, a ground attack, ground assault. It was estimated that a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand would be killed. So by dropping those two bombs, we saved approximately a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand lives, maybe more than that. So anybody want to know if it was necessary? There's your answer. Do the history, that's all I can tell people. Okay. Anybody got any comments, any questions? And one more thing, how much time I got left, Councilwoman McKinney?
Seventeen seconds.
Two seconds?
Seventeen seconds, sorry.
I'm going to try to get it in. Okay. A couple of meetings ago, a while back, in the previous administration, I brought it to the attention that Walmart on West Espinade has no security in that store. They get away with the security detail. Now, when they set up shop in this city, I'm sure they got lucrative tax breaks. And in order for those tax breaks, they had to have stipulations in that contract. Now, ask the then-administration and the then-council to get a hold of that contract and see what those stipulations was. And if one of those stipulations, they agreed to have security in that store, then we need to hold their feet to the fire and let's get that security back in that store. Because what we got here is we got a situation, a terrible situation, a accident or something terrible just waiting to happen.
I believe it's back, Al. The detail's back.
Oh, good, good, Keith. Appreciate it, buddy. I'll look for them next time I'm in there. I'm in there every day. Anybody got any comments, any questions?
You know, if you go in there and steal something, you'll probably find them.
No, not even that, Councilman, because I, the reports I was getting, the greeters at the door when they ask for the receipt for items that's not in the bag, they get very hostile and they get threatened. That's why I brought it to the council again. So no, I, well, I guess it all depends who you are.
Thank you.
Anybody got any comment, anybody else? Thanks again, Keith.
Thank you, Mr. Morella. Thank you, Chief Conley. Mr. Brian Miller? If you could state your name.
Again, that's a tough act to follow when you got to come up behind, Mr. Al.
And you have three minutes.
Brian Miller, District Two, twenty-one-hundred block of Indiana. I'm going to ask you a question tonight, and it'll probably come up at a later time. The accrual of annual leave, I'm sure, is the same under civil service for police and fire as it is under the civil service for the city employees. Is, am I correct in asking that? Or is the civil service accrual of annual time different for y'all, chief? Should be about the same? And the reason I ask that is, is, and then, I'm sorry, go ahead, man.
It might be a little different.
Might be a little different, okay. And then, if, as an example, fire chief comes over from another jurisdiction to take over fire chief from us, is the accrual of his annual leave basically part of maybe the benefit package that he's given? Or does he get extra or more based off of his tenure in the service? Or should his accrual of vacation time be just from the years of service he has here with us?
The way I see it, it's a city benefit, so it should be time working for the city.
For the city.
Please have no lateral transfer.
Right, right, right. And, and I'm, like I said, it's a question I'm asking tonight, but it'll probably come up at a later date for, for other reasons. I just wanted to clarify it before we go. So I appreciate that, man.
And I just learned of your, of your, why you questioning, so.
Okay.
And I, I can be honest and say I'll have to look into it because I don't know.
Okay.
But it may be a little different, but not as different as you probably wanted me to say.
Right. Thank you, sir.
But I'll, I'll let you know.
You got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Mr. William? Kevin William? Is it Kevin?
Good night, my name is Kevin William. D of eight thirteen Thirty-first Street in Kenner, Louisiana, Lincoln Manor Division. Congratulations to all y'all that's sitting on the board and won y'all election. I'm here to talk about the construction that going on. I like the idea what he's planning on doing on Thirty Street. Well, I've been waiting for that for, since two thousand and five, okay? But now that I wasn't blind then, I became blind two thousand and eighteen. I just got home February this year. I called the other Recreation Department about putting up blind sign lights going into, walking up Thirty-first Street, because I can't cross across the street if I wanted to go to Brothers, I wanted to go to Circle K, or anyone, no matter what. We don't have no construction for, we're here around other blind person, all right? They put all the new construction right there, new curves going into, to Clemson Street, but don't have nothing for the blind person to cross over to the street. So I called the Recreation Department, me and my traveling device, I just graduated from traveling off of Thirty-first Street. It's so regularly trying to leave from off of Akron, going down to Sam's, because they don't have no sidewalk, all that's told up, I almost hung myself a couple times, all right? On the opposite side of the street, they got holes in it, in the On the opposite side of the street, they got holes in it, in the street, with a big old hole on the other side from me, they never tried to correct that, okay? What I'm saying, since they're doing all this money coming through here for construction, I think they ought to do something for the handicapped and blind, because we don't have nothing for to protect us, all right? And when we got the turn, the leave from by Sam's, the turn from by Shell, to go to the interstate, where's the dangerous area, because I got to cross over Thirty First Street to get to the interstate, to cross over, to get to come back, I think that's very imperfection of whoever draw that plan up there, because they forgot about us. No way in this area, I think, from the new construction, have nothing for the blind people. I think they ought to take consideration of their plan and implicate that in their plan, because I'm on the corner, Akron Thirty First. I've been there since nineteen ninety, okay? So they've been supposed to fix my curb, water when it come there, the drain's not working properly on that side. They raised the streets up in two thousand and five, dumped everything on my property. I tried to get them to come back and fix that, the old people that was there. They still didn't come and do nothing now. I went to school, came back February this year. I called planning, again, still didn't reach out to do nothing for me, all right? And I think I'm a taxpayer, I got a business license at this address, you understand, and I'm a good tenant over there, I don't cause no problem, now I'm having problem from the cities trying to give me a hand, that what I need to protect myself. So want y'all to look into that about helping the blind and handicapped, not just the street lights, we don't have no walking lights. And I feel I've been dangerous every time I try to step from off my corner, I can't even get to the corner, because the stop sign is way on Jasper, when it should be on Akron. You got two stop signs back to back on each other, they ain't going to stop the traffic from flying, the next stop sign they got by GT Woods, the next one they got way on Bainbridge. But look where I'm at. So I think they should have, they took and put a blind sign in a blind area over a hundred foot from the bus stop where they can't even see, the cars can't even see me. One turned in front of me and my instructor when I was traveling, almost hit both of us, because we don't have nothing to protect me. So I want y'all to look into that, get the planning out there, come look at that corner. I got my map from the planner when I built my house, I lost twenty feet from my corner to help City of Kenner, because they got a gas line on my corner, and my corner the only one, and Lincoln Manor sidewalk don't meet sidewalk to sidewalk. I had to shorten my driveway shorter for my vehicles, that I have to be across my sidewalk because of the gas line. But nobody don't look at that, and I'm instead of getting harassed behind that, and I got my planning right here, we at Mazzan, since I've been here, and they gave me this when I first built my property there. I know my property line and everything, and I need somebody to come out there and see what I'm talking about. And I bought it to Ms. Washington, the president at the civic organization, she told me she only could do so much. I bought, the new administrator, Councilman Ms. Dee, she said she could just come to the meeting, because I have to bring it to y'all now, the new administrator. I'm not blaming nobody on the board, but I want y'all to think about what the last administrator didn't do, and don't let it fall on the new administrator, and y'all do something to help Lincoln Manor, because Lincoln Manor is tore up. All the way from my street going towards, y'all see, Comex, from the back bridge, they put a new sidewalk coming from the new bridge and stopped before they got the Bainbridge. All right, then, what about the rest of the walk? If I wanted to take a walk towards the back way, I can't go, all right? I can't walk no way back that way. Every, since two thousand and five, they've been paying that back Thirty First Street since I knew them. Every time money came in from RTA, they paid a little bit on Thirty First Street and forget about the other streets and the sidewalk. So we going to lay there and monitor now the new administrator, and I have faith in y'all, I really do. And I know the chief of police, he been, he did a marvelous job here mayor, and I know he going to do a good job being the mayor. And the new chief, I know both of y'all. Y'all don't remember me, but I remember y'all used to have that party bus running through here. I never had no problem, never gave them no problem, but I want y'all to remember me now, because I gave myself to try to help in the community, and our community in Lincoln Manor need a lot of help. And I would appreciate the Recreation Department to help us get that gym back, because these children now, they don't have nothing to do. And before they start breaking any people's houses and start acting up again, they're going to cause the mayor to do more work than the previous, you understand, chief of police, because he did a marvelous job back there. But we want to keep it clean back there and keep the children, give them something to do, give them a program, do something, just lay there and complain about them, all right? But my job is to talk about me being secure on Akron and Thirty First Street, okay? I can't talk about the whole Kenner, but I know construction need to be done in our area. So y'all look at our area, just look on outside the area in the other district and think about Lincoln Manor this time under the new administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, for coming up and giving your concerns, and definitely, I've been from meeting to meeting, so you just add another one, that I will be meeting and finding out exactly what we can do to help you in that area. I've only been here thirty days, but I, you know, I've been trying to do a lot. As far as Lincoln Gym, you're so right. The mayor said tonight that we are on the way of opening Susan Park, Lincoln is next. So that gym will be open very shortly. I can't give you a timeline, maybe three weeks, I'm not sure. Hopefully before then, I'm not sure. But they are def, but this administration is definitely working on that, and we're not going to forget you in the area that you are looking for.
Yeah, okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Wilmot.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Yeah, I just wanted to mention too, Lincoln Manor, we have, for some time, we've been working on drainage. It's been many years, in fact, and I think we, we had some funding, secured some funding, and it was big projects, too. They started off with increasing the generator power in order to pump the waters out, and I think, I want to say it had to be a good ten years ago, I know I had discussed that project when I was a state representative with Mr. Gonzalez, he was with the city back then, and I was with the state, and we got some funding. I was told that we had bottlenecks right there, and it's in Lincoln Manor area, and what we did is we increased the pump capacity, and I think that's been successfully done, because the airport also has its drainage system, and then the city has its drainage system through the parish. So we have that done. Then we had recently, we got subsurface drainage improvements in Lincoln Manor as well, and these are multiple million dollar projects, both of them. I think that's been accomplished, it's still in the works, of course, but we still need other things done in Lincoln Manor. We just discussed the roadways, and this gentleman came, and thank you for coming, Mr. Williams, and he was discussing issues, other issues that we need to look at. So I appreciate everybody working hard and trying to get some of these issues resolved in Lincoln Manor area. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wilmot. Pastor Jackie Brown Cockerham, if you can approach, you have three minutes, and I apologize for not tracking that.
Good afternoon, I'm Pastor Jackie Brown Cockerham, twenty-six ten Decatur Street, apartment eight, and I would first like to give accolades to Code Enforcement, Planning Department, where I had a need for that palm tree on Veterans Boulevard to be trimmed, and finally, it was trimmed this week. So I want to thank you, Code Enforcement. My other concern is to have the city, someone, council people, administrators, to communicate with Entergy regarding a street light that they removed at, during IDA. They promised on October sixteenth of twenty twenty-one to bring that light back, they have not done it, and I know you are aware that a lot of the construction that's going on comes through Decatur Street. So the area there is pitch dark at night, and we have transit movement through that area. I would appreciate if anyone, anyone can do something about communicating with Entergy about reinstalling, replacing that particular light. And then my other concern would be that I noticed just driving on the Richard Wilson Boulevard, that there are street lights on the right side of the street where the Kenner Department is, and then I think the Levy Administrative Building, but there are no street lights on the residential side. I think the residents need to have street lights over there for their safety and protection. Another thing is, I'm waiting to hear from someone about contact with New Orleans, about the airport, or about the state, with the state and even Kenner itself, about a sound wall on that service road, that airport extension road, or expansion road, I'm sorry. Even with Gilchrist, I'm not, I'm not sure who's responsible. And a walkway for the pedestrians crossing Loyola Avenue, Loyola Street at Veterans is very dangerous. I've seen some serious mishaps going on there, and with the pedestrians. Another thing is the update on the fire station, I haven't heard anything, and I know I came in a little late, but is there someone I can communicate with after the meeting, maybe? Okay, all right, Mr. T, thank you very much. Any questions, comments, or suggestions?
I do, Ms. Cockerham, Pastor Cockerham, thank you so much for coming tonight and giving your concerns. I forget the lady that's over the Civic Association, she's been at the council meetings, and because Link, because Susan Park Gym was not open, that she had not had the meeting. So hopefully, as soon as that gym is open and the city give us a clearance, the first thing we're going to do is meet with you all in that area to address these concerns. Now, most of the stuff that comes in District One actually comes through our email, and the things that come through our email, we do address them immediately, and the council has been very good at giving us the contact. So this is a little bit new to us, but we are handling, you know, when they come that way. But we are going to meet with you all, with the Civic Association, as soon as Susan Park Gym is open, and that should be maybe within a couple of weeks or so, and we'll definitely handle your concerns, but thank you so much.
Yes, that's Anna Franklin, she's the president now, was the former president until the election, when I had to resign from this position, but thank you so much.
Yes.
Any, any others? Thank you so much, have a blessed night.
Thank you, Ms. Cockerham. Ms. Dolores Windsor, Windsor, sorry. If you can state your name, and, yes.
Dolores Windsor, fifteen twenty-one Mayfield Street, Kenner. Good evening, everyone. I'm calling, I'm up here to talk about the pine trees on Thirty First Street, they need to be trimmed up, very bad. We've been asking for this for years now, so I hope the new administration will step in and do something about it. We have drainage problems, the drainages are all stuffed up, grass is growing in them, the water can't go through them on Thirty First Street throughout the whole Lincoln Manor. I rode through the whole Lincoln Manor, a lot of them full with grass, dirt and grass, water can't go through them. And then I'm asking help with code, with the code violations that we have back there. We asking that I would talk with someone to help us with all these broken code violations, and I would thank you all very, very much.
Thank you, Ms. Windsor.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Windsor. Any other comments? Okay, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Madam President. Richard Brown, eight twenty-four Sessions Lane in Westwood Subdivision and District Four, and I'm here just to give two or three shout-outs. First off, I want to give a shout-out to our councilman, Councilman George Branigan, for all of his help with the cleanup we had for the entrance to our subdivision about a week ago, which was Holly Heights resident Melody Lawson actually organized it. George Branigan furnished a bunch of equipment, furnished his big trailer that we can load all of the weeds and grass into, Lawn Mower, an absolutely awesome gasoline hedge trimmer, other equipment. We had eight or ten of us show up, and in just about two or two and a half hours, made a world of difference in the entrance to the subdivision to Holly Heights, Westwood, and Chateau Terre. A world of difference. So thank you, Councilman, we appreciate your help and your equipment, it made a huge difference. And I want to give a shout-out to Councilman Ronnie Schwartz for winning Best Chef and Best Table Decorations at the benefit Celebrity Chef Cook-Off that the River Region Republican Women had Tuesday night. All the money goes to charity. Have about a dozen celebrity chefs ranging from the Lieutenant Governor, Commissioner of Agriculture, State Treasurer, county, city councilmembers, Councilman Dominic Empistado was there, the mayor. Ronnie Schwartz won first place for Best Dish, and I want to tell you, it was awesome. He also won first place for Best, for Best Table Decoration. And, so what's that?
Second place on the table.
On the table, oh, okay, on the table.
First and second.
First place on the food, though, but that got it. And also Keith Conley got second place for Best Chef, second best chef, and his was good. And Chief Glazer got the most awesome participation plaque.
I cooked my food, I didn't buy it, and I don't have thirty-something years of a fireman where I have a lot of time to cook. Somebody sounds a little bit bitter right now.
He was an awesome sport about it, really, and it, we all had a good time, it was a grand time by everybody for a good cause, and, and our Kenner people racked up, so y'all did well, congratulations, thank you, thank you, George.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr.?
Mr. Brown, I just want to let you know that if Ronnie would have had a fish hanging on a fishing pole, he might have got first place in the decorations, and two, all the trash we took out of the corner of Chateau and Westmanade, I dumped it by Mayor Glazer's house.
Listen, the fishing pole would have done it, Ronnie.
Yes, it would.
Anyone else wanting to speak? If not, motion to adjourn.